Monday, the 12th of February, meeting in the Town Council. Jimmy?
Thank you, sir. Our heavenly Father, we come before you just one more time, and again, we thank you so much, us little town. We thank you for the ability to be here. We thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed on us. Just be with us tonight as we make the arrangements and move forward for our business. Be with us all, be with those that lost loved ones and those that are sick. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Noel.
Pamela Samuels? Scott Oldham?
Here.
William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager?
I'm here.
Dan Swafford?
Here.
And I believe the marshal has an introduction.
Thank you. Last summer, I was approached by Town Manager Mike Farmer and Scott in the Seven Oaks community that wanted some credibility, more credibility for their SRO officer, and we decided to put Jeff Baker. Jeff, will you come up, please? They had a very talented, a very wonderful SRO officer, but he didn't have the certification through the ILA. So through a series of letters and we had that, got the ILA system set up, I'm sorry it took so long, but Mike told me the other day, he said, better than long than wrong. So we've, I appreciate that. So I'll introduce you tonight to Jeffrey Baker. Stephanie and Dylan, would you come up, please? Dylan is a student at Seven Oaks. And Stephanie is, what is she, what's her title?
She's my wife.
As I said.
I'm the marketing director.
Marketing director. Please.
I'm gonna get home.
Anyway, we've got a very good relationship with Seven Oaks. Again, we have, Jeff will be going through annual training. He'll be doing the same thing as our officers do, and it'll be a very incredible thing for him. So Jeff, say a couple of words.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to, my name is Jeff Baker. I'm the SRO over at Seven Oaks School. And I just want to thank Police Chief Jimmy Durnall, Zach, for helping with a lot of the training. I'm looking forward to serving the town, serving the police department, serving the school, and being part of the community to make it a lot stronger and a lot better for all of us. So thank you, everybody, for your help. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff. I too want to thank Zach for this. He went through a lot of paperwork, a lot of phone calls and things to get this, they call it the 40-hour basic, pre-basic, and it takes a lot to get that set up. So we appreciate that. But anyway, thanks for your support on this, and I appreciate it. Jeffrey, cheers, Lisa. Dylan, you're a good man. I love that handshake.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate everything.
You're welcome. Glad to hear your voice.
All right, we'll move on now to approval of the regular meetings, regular meeting for January 22nd, 2022.
So moved.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Ex-pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
So moved.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we're gonna make a short deviation because of a time constraint. With council's permission, we're gonna move cooperative purchasing with Sourcewell now in front of resolutions because our contact here has another meeting to attend. So Kip, do you wanna handle that?
Yes. Can everybody hear me fine?
Yes.
I, we need, we're starting to buy some more equipment here recently, and with the equipment we're purchasing, it's gonna take with bid advertisements, you know, seeking is with Sourcewell, I have somebody here tonight to speak about Sourcewell. Sourcewell is a government entity from Minnesota that they contract out these, get these contracts that they give, and we can buy this equipment through Sourcewell. And I'm just gonna go ahead and turn it over to Dana. This is Dana Callhammer, and she's delighted to meet me and Amber and myself, talk to you on Friday and give us a lot of information about this. So I'll let her go ahead and speak. Dana?
Thank you, Kip. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much for the opportunity to spend just a few minutes with you all tonight. I really appreciate it. As Kip mentioned, I met with he and Amber on Friday, and we did an overview, kind of a Sourcewell 101, if you will. For him to be new to cooperative purchasing as well as Sourcewell, it was a good opportunity for me to lay the groundwork, show a little history, and show the opportunity for using these cooperative purchases or cooperative contracts moving forward. So just really quickly, my name is Dana Callhammer. Like he said, I've been with Sourcewell for about a year, and we are based in central Minnesota. So we provide cooperative purchasing solutions to over 50,000 public agencies across the United States. So we are all public employees, just like you. We're not here to sell you anything. We literally were put in place to help government, municipalities, education, nonprofit agencies run more efficiently across the country. So it's really a great opportunity to add this tool to your toolbox, if you will. So when Kip mentioned that you're in need of some equipment, so let's say you have an over-threshold purchase that you need to make. Like he said, instead of going out and getting the three bids and taking the time to prepare the RFP, do the advertising, receive the bids, evaluate them, and then award the contracts, Sourcewell takes that entire section of that process out of the loop for you. It's not that it's not done, it's just that we do it on your behalf. So we are creating that efficiency. And so on top of that, you're also getting negotiated, typically better negotiated rates. So for you, as the town of Ellisville, to maybe go and purchase a piece of, let's say, John Deere equipment, you could do that, but you might have a better opportunity for additional savings by purchasing from the Sourcewell contract because we, again, have this buying power of these 50,000 agencies across the United States. So you, even as a smaller agency, have the opportunity to reap that benefit. So those are just a couple of the kind of high-level things that I wanted to touch on regarding Sourcewell. But again, we are a government agency. Our website is fully transparent. You don't need a login or password to access any of the information from our over 700 contracts. And Kip has my information. I'm happy to do a similar overview with anyone who might be interested in more information. The biggest thing is that you just need to confirm from your end that cooperative purchasing is allowed in your procurement rules. So we can't make that decision for you. We're not here to make that decision. So as long as you all have the green light, then we're here as a resource for you. I also did want to share that the city of Bloomington, just to give you an example, has been a participating agency with Sourcewell since 2004, and they have purchased over $12 million worth of products and services through Sourcewell contracts in that time. So feel free to reach out to your contacts at the town, you know, with Bloomington, and ask them, how is their experience? How, you know, how is everything working? Because we encourage that. We want you to hear from your counterparts in your area in terms of how successful has it been to work with Sourcewell. So any questions that I can field this evening?
Actually, I have one. Do you, do you also work with purchasing, like, police and fire equipment too, or is it just?
Yes, 100%. That's a really, public safety category is really large for us. So, yep, absolutely.
I'll ask a question. So how does it work? Like?
The way the state purchases equipment, and I know they have a source that you can go to and have set prices, is it similar to that?
Yes. Yep, so we're all similar to what, how it is to purchase from state contracts. We're similar to that. So essentially, you're piggybacking off of contracts through Sourcewell, like you would be with a state contract. So very similar in the fact that you're actually purchasing from that vendor or supplier and not from Sourcewell, just like you're not purchasing from the state, right? So you continue to work directly with those vendors and suppliers, and we've just done all the work on the back end for you.
And who decides? How you function and set up the rules of interaction with municipalities?
What was, what was that?
Well, my question is, what's your origins and then who decides how you go about your business, and what's the oversight on it? I mean, is there a no?
Sure, sure. Absolutely. So we are actually, we have an eight-member org that we are governed by. So real similar to how a municipality would run. So we are governed by an eight-member org. And again, we were started as a local service cooperative in Minnesota, and we are allowed to provide these cooperative purchasing solutions through what's called the joint exercise of powers law. And all of this information, I shared this with Kip, but there's a pretty large and robust compliance and legal section on our website, and all of these statutes are listed. So real easy to either plug in the state of Indiana and see what your, you know, overarching state cooperative purchasing laws and rules are. So it's all right there on our website as well.
Okay.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
So for any of you into a contract with Sourcewell, is there any upfront cost, any cost at all to be a part of Sourcewell?
No. Great question. Again, there is, because we are a government agency, there is no cost or obligation to utilize Sourcewell contracts. So I'll take that a step further. How are we paid? How can this be a free service? We are what's called a self-supporting government agency, and we get paid by the vendors a nominal, what we would call an administrative fee, for every purchase that's done via a Sourcewell contract. So that's how we are funded.
So is it actually a contract between town and Sourcewell? I mean, we actually just sign up? We can then use you for any purchase? And we, can we, can we also purchase outside the contract if we find a different way we'd like to purchase a piece of equipment?
Absolutely, yeah. You don't, you, so you actually, the town has a membership already. You have been in our system for a few years. You just haven't utilized any contracts so far. So you are what's called a participating agency. So there is a number attached to that, which Kip and Amber have. And anytime you want to utilize a Sourcewell contract, you simply provide that number, your agency number, to the vendor that you want to work with. So again, I'll use John Deere, just because it's a common example to use. You go to your local John Deere dealership, and you want to buy a tractor, you say, hey, this is Kip, here's my Sourcewell member number, and I would like to receive the Sourcewell pricing. And then that is what they will quote you. So it's literally as simple as that.
And then you handle the transaction afterwards?
No, you do everything through that vendor or supplier. Yep. And so again, I'll take that one step further. So when we award our contracts, we award them on a national manufacturer level, i.e. John Deere, again, as the example. And we rely on those vendors, dealer networks, to bring the options to you locally so that you can spend your dollars locally. That's our role. We want you to be able to, you're the stewards of your money, right? You need to make the best decisions for your town. So with John Deere as the example, they have 1,900 dealerships across the U.S. So really, almost anyone that we work with in our 50 states has somebody local that is an authorized dealer for John Deere, so they could go and take advantage of this bulk, you know, rate opportunity by utilizing a Sourcewell contract.
So basically, the thing about what she's saying, I've talked to Joe Van Devene with Bloomington City Street Department, and Joe is very happy with it, I guess you would say. He buys the equipment through this. The fleet management from the city, they are in charge of doing the fleet purchasing for trucks and vehicles. Joe has told me that the Calistir here in Bloomington and Westside Tractor in Bloomington are Sourcewell providers. So if we decide we want to buy equipment from John Deere or Caterpillar here in Bloomington, we just call them here in Bloomington and tell them what we want. And to lead up, where I'm getting with this, is we're gonna be looking at a few dump trucks here in the very, very near future that's gonna be over that $150,000 threshold, that we can just look up through Sourcewell, for instance, either Kenworth, Mack trucks on Sourcewell process, and just get the pricing for the, Sourcewell price for the truck itself, and not have to look through the bidding process.
Okay. Are there council questions or questions from supervisors? Darla, is there anything we need specific to this, since there's no contract?
No, I think this was just an informational portion of the meeting, just so the council would be aware of, this is an option.
All right, well Dana, thank you so much for the presentation, and we have further questions, we'll be back in touch.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time, have a great evening.
You too.
Okay. Bye.
Okay, now we'll go to resolutions. The first resolution this evening is Resolution 05-2024, Accepting Dedication for Jacob Court.
Yes, I sent out an email last week, and I suggested that the council table this again because I'm still working with the owner of Jacob Court. It's a partnership, Chang Brothers, and they are located, or the partners who need to sign are located in Santa Clara, California. So I do have direct email contact information for the two gentlemen who need to sign the dedication, so it will be ready for the next meeting.
Was this the one where their, they, their corporation was administratively dissolved?
Right. It was administratively dissolved by the Indiana Secretary of State, and they reorganized as a partnership.
At council's request, is there a motion to table?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second, whenever you're ready.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Here.
Next resolution is 06-2024, Additional Appropriation General, MVH, MVH Restricted and ARPA.
I can take that. So on the $33,000 for the general fund, that is going to be the appropriation request for the rural transit that we decide, the council decided that they would like to have funding for. The motor vehicle highway, $35,000. When the budget was inputted into the gateway, there was a clerical error that didn't allocate for the $35,000, and so this is to correct that error in the gateway when we put in the numbers. It was on the budgets that were given to you initially, but because it was supposed to be on MVH Restricted and the MVH, when Amber and I were looking over the 782, it had been omitted. So this is to ask for the appropriation, so we have permission to spend it.
I'm lost on that one. So we already appropriated, but it did not appear on gateway?
So we did not appropriate it, which is why we have to do the additional appropriation. When the budgets were given to you and the budgets were approved, you did approve it. But when it was inputted into the gateway, it was not inputted correctly. Because when we put it into the gateway, when we separate out the budgets, we give you MVH and then MVH Restricted as separate funds, but when it's inputted into the gateway, it's inputted as one fund. So on 415 is roads and alleyways, it wasn't inputted in there, the $35,000.
So was our $35,000 short then from what we originally approved, or was it somewhere else?
I'm not explaining this, I think, correctly. It was, the council approved the correct amount.
Correct.
But when?
But in gateway.
But in gateway, so the DLGF did not approve that amount. So this is why we need to do the additional appropriation, to get the permission to spend this amount.
There's money there, we just don't have it appropriated correctly.
Yes.
So altogether, all of these amounts are a little over $165,000. All of this money is already within the budget somewhere. We're just putting it in its own silos.
We're just asking for permission from the DLGF to spend it, yes. Because on the motor vehicle restricted, we received more than we had appropriated for.
So none of this money is coming out of any other fund?
No.
What's it coming out of?
Noel?
So the only one that is gonna be coming out of an additional fund is going to be under the general fund of $33,000, because we did not have that in the budget when we initially created the budget.
Okay, and that's for the rural transit funding?
Yes. And the motor vehicle, the restricted and for the highway, those are in the budget. It's less, the $61,000 was more than we anticipated receiving, so that's why we have to get the additional appropriation for that. And for the ARPA, the $42,000, we did not encumber that last year, so it's in there. We just need to have it appropriated to be able to spend it.
But the $33,000 is the only new money?
Correct. That's the only new money that is coming out of that was not originally presented to you in the budget.
And that was based off the December conversations on funding?
Correct.
And should that $33,000, that's what we're kind of back the napkin figuring out what we'll need to fund till March?
Yes.
Okay.
That was the amount that the council had decided on at that meeting, that when it was decided, that was the number.
Gotcha.
All right. Further council questions? Mike, are you good with all these?
Yeah. I have to pay attention when they're talking about it. I'm confident everything's the way she said it was.
Okay. Is there action from the council?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 06-2024.
Motion second. When you're ready.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now we'll move to ordinances on first reading. First ordinance this evening is Ordinance 2024-03, To amend paid sick leave fire policy.
What you have before you this evening is a suggested change to Section 36.205, which is the paid sick leave for firefighters, which just changes the language to say that employees who work 24, 48 shall be credited with 10 hours of sick time every month of paid status or five shifts per year, instead of one sick day every 2.4 months of paid status or five per year.
Okay, that's the only change to this?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just to make the record.
Keeping it a little easier is all it's for.
Hours stay the same, right?
Correct. Okay. Is there council questions on this? Okay, it's ordinance on first reading, so it'll return to us at the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Ordinance 2024-04, To clarify how overtime pay is calculated for police officers.
The purpose of this ordinance is to make the police overtime pay ordinance parallel to the fire. That for the fire department. Actually, I'm missing a page. So the new section is in Section E under Section 36.223 overtime, and that language that's in Section E is exactly the same language that is in the fire personnel policy. So new Section E, if the council approves it, we'll read, "For purposes of determining when to pay overtime, only those hours actually worked during the work period will be considered. PTO time, vacation time, sick time, or any time off for any reason shall not be included in the hourly calculation."
Questions from council?
So was this calculated with that in before? The vacation, sick, whatever?
Actually, for the other employees, that's included. There's a section in the personnel policy that includes PTO vacation time and sick time.
But your question is, was it calculated before for the police?
Right.
No, it was not.
So we're just putting this in there as a matter of record-keeping?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Additional questions from council? Again, this is an ordinance on first reading, which will return to us at the next council meeting. Ordinance 2024-05, Authorizing an Increase in the Purchase of Crime Insurance Coverage.
Yes. The purpose of this ordinance is to allow for the clerk treasurer to either post the position bond in the amount of $300,000 or to, for the town to increase the crime insurance policy to the amount of $500,000. And that is permitted by statute. This was up for discussion at the town council's December meeting, and the Indiana Code specifically requires certain personnel in a town to post a certain bond, or in the alternative, you can purchase a blanket bond, a position bond, or increase the crime insurance coverage. So this does mesh with the Indiana Code in terms of the alternatives that are allowed.
It actually ends up being less expensive for the town. So for the previous clerk that had a individual surety bond that was set at $300,000, that ran $995 per year. And for the blanket bond, the public officials blanket bond that we were able to get for everyone, the total of it for, as a whole, was $600, that was split 350 for the clerk and 125 for water and 125 for sewer to cover the personnel that was in that, and to increase the crime insurance policy, an additional $250,000 will be less than $100. So in total, it'll actually save the town money and it'll provide more coverage.
Questions from council?
Did we have the crime insurance before, or was it?
We had $250,000.
Okay. So we? On Sandy Head, crime insurance, and she also had the, what was the other bond?
Sandy had to post a surety bond under the ordinance, but the other employees who handled money were covered by the crime insurance policies. You've had the crime insurance policy for some time. And then in 2015, the legislature made some changes to the statute to make it more specific as to what had to be posted and what the alternatives were. And so I actually drafted the ordinance for you in 2015, when the town enacted that ordinance.
We just don't remember, Cassini was here for so long. This is part of the setup for the new clerk.
All right. And so the SBOA is okay with this?
Yes.
This is?
Yes.
100%?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I understand because of the nature of what we're doing here and the time requirement, there's a potential motion?
Yeah, I will move that ordinance number 2024-05 be submitted for first reading. That's the first.
We gotta do this first. So because of that, Noel, we have to take a roll call on this to move it on to first reading, so whenever you're ready.
Yes, sir. Dan Swafford?
Oh, what do we do? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we gotta have a second for this.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Sorry, I thought we had that. Now you have?
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, I move that ordinance number 2024-05 be adopted on the same day in which it's introduced.
Second. Motion second.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, before we move on, is there public comment concerning this ordinance, since this is the first time, since it's the first time the public is actually hearing it? Seeing none?
All right, I move that ordinance number 2024-05 be adopted.
Whenever you're ready.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we'll move to those ordinances on this evening's schedule on second reading. First is ordinance 2024-01, To amend 2023-18, the salary ordinance.
Yes. So I sent an email out. I hope everyone was able to read it. It is in your packet correctly. There is one change for the overtime, non-exempt 40-hour-a-week employee. I don't know how it was missed on the salary ordinance when we put in the language. It excluded any authorized work in excess of eight hours in a payroll day. It just had in excess of 40 hours in a payroll week, so we needed to add that to the amendment. So I wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that, because that is the one thing that changed since the last reading.
If you may ask, why? We're doing that overtime after eight hours in a payroll day?
That's why it's been, excuse me.
That's the way it's been for, well, ever since I've been here and...
that's the way it's been for, well, ever since I've been here and was managing the utilities. We asked, we asked for that language so we could have an incentive to bring people out in the middle of the night, and it's worked well, and I guess I'll just leave it at that.
This is for all employees, though, correct?
No, so this is for non-exempt forty-hour-a-week employees, so that would not include fire
Right, yeah, and everybody else.
So we're not, but I'm saying we're not just targeting to those that would be called in their off duties.
And this is how we've processed the payrolls since I've started.
It's been this way since, I think, nineteen ninety-nine.
Police or fire, that's on the regular, generally Monday through Friday. Yeah.
I'm just
Yeah, word a little weird, I guess.
Well, but yeah, but I just, that's not the way it works in the real world. And, I mean, for the utilities, I can understand as an incentive, but everybody else, I don't know why they're covered under this eight-hour-day thing. Because it's
It's kind of a moot point. Everyone's paid, I mean, it's considered paid time off when you take a day off, and so you do get your forty hours in, it's guaranteed. But I asked for it to stay in, and like I said, there was a purpose to it, and it's worked all these years, and I'd just like to keep it in there.
Well, for utilities, I can understand, but what was the purpose to all the other departments?
I'm sorry?
What's the purpose for the other departments?
Well, there's not very many other people involved. The only time it would come into play for them is we called them in for an emergency situation to man, say, the police, the police department, or a tornado, and we wanted to utilize people for communications. And that would be the only time I could see that would be a good purpose for it, but I don't think leaving all the forty people in there is a problem, I mean, you know, you just manage that, and I don't ever see it being abused, and I don't know that it ever has been. I mean, we could we could change the wording and try to manipulate the words to make sure it's just for callouts for snow and main breaks and after hour emergencies, but that's intent of it anyways, after hour emergencies, so it would be frowned on to just call somebody in just so they could get paid time and a half, like clerical staff.
This, I pulled this language directly from the personnel, the current personnel policy that we had that had been on all of the other
I believe that, and when I was with, last year, when we were talking about it with Sandy and the consultant, I was trying to drill down, and no one could give me a reason other than utilities. And we even had some, you know, certain called-out pay rates and stuff that we were bouncing around, but nobody could explain to me why it was put in the first place.
I think maybe because, for the staff that you're talking about, for want of a better word, the clerical staff, so I don't mean that as anything beyond what it is, they're never offered overtime in the course of a normal day.
Correct.
That's just not something they do. I think what this envisions is, again, like you said, we have some, well, a good one was when town hall flooded, the old town hall, and people had to come in on their weekend to help move all the stuff or save all the stuff or whatever else. I think it's just such a rare event that it's an unpredictable thing. I think it can, where you're, where we're, where you and I are kind of going is maybe we put lines in about the callouts and whatever else.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't like the blanket, I'm not comfortable with the blanket excessive eight hours, because even in those callout, like the weekend, I mean, well, not necessarily, but the majority of those people are also going to have the time and a half, because they've already worked their five days.
Well, yes or no?
And they'll be over the forty, a majority, not everybody, but
But take, for instance, and again, I'm not sure that this actually encompasses them, our people who drive the snowplows. So again, you start Monday and everything looks rosy, and you decide, I'm gonna take Tuesday off. And all of a sudden, we get nine inches of snow on Friday night.
Right, you would expect them to
Get overtime, but the way it currently sets, they don't get overtime for the first eight hours.
Well, that's correct.
Right, and that's kind of
That's a normal workday.
Right, but everybody else is, you know, again, we need them on that Friday night, because there's nine inches of snow. It's not their fault they took off Tuesday, because they couldn't predict Friday night there was nine inches of snow coming.
Yeah, that, I think there just needs to be differentiating, I mean, those are possible on-call positions, but in the parks department, do we have someone that would be on-call? Huh?
Our employees.
Well, we have one.
Well, one, yeah, I guess.
But, and we eventually, gotta remember, anything we're passing now, I mean, we're planning for the future, so we're not just talking about the crew we have now. We're talking about
Well, this is salary ordinance for this year. That's all this affects is this year's salary ordinance.
Yes, sir.
It's not a change to personnel policy.
But the fact we've left it in since before, nobody's been addressing it.
Very good, yeah.
So I think this is a time that maybe
But maybe we don't address it in this document, we address it back in the personnel policy.
Yes.
Yeah. Understanding the concern and that clerical staff normally doesn't have that, I do have three firefighters that are forty hours a week that are excluded from the overtime because of the way the policy's written. If they take any time off, it does knock them out of overtime, unlike the other forty-hour-a-week people in the town. So that would be a significant hit for those three firefighters having to respond off-duty or come in.
I don't want to do that. Do we have overtime usually for non-people that are called out for you, I mean, does the clerk's office, does the
Planning does, yes.
Okay, what, all right, so, I mean, that would be
Why would planning have overtime?
We have planning condition once a month, so that warrants overtime.
Why would not this warrant adjusting the schedule?
We're just so busy, it's just difficult.
So in the clerk's line, we only have five hundred dollars in overtime. Mine, if that tells you anything, and it's been that way for several years when I looked back.
So how much overtime we talking about for the planning department, how many people?
It's for the assistant planner. Usually it's one to one-and-a-half hours a month.
But like you said, though, it's so busy, that extra would be over the forty hours anyway.
Yeah, but you know, there's vacations too, so
Okay, but if we're gonna go down that line of thinking, we just told police and fire that if you take a PTO day, you don't get overtime.
Well, I was he was saying we're so busy, but I do, you know, we do, there's only two of us, so there is vacation time.
With respect, I don't think you're any busier than police or fire or utilities. And if it's gonna be good for all of them, why would it not be good for the entire town? Or why don't we go back to the reverse system? And this is where we get ourselves into, that William's pointing out, is we've got different circumstances for different groups of people. And again, the adage of, hey, I took off Tuesday because it was forty-five and I had to do stuff around the house, and oh, all of a sudden, we got this snowstorm that came up, and Saturday night, I got nine inches worth of snow. But you don't get the overtime for nine inches of snow, but you get an hour and a half worth of overtime for a meeting you knew was coming up at the end of the month? Again, it's, and I'm not faulting you for that, and I'm not trying to take that away from you, but we can't continue to have that system that's twofold. It's either gotta be one or the other. Or we have to line up the personnel policy, who's eligible for overtime and who's not, and under what circumstances.
We didn't have any suggestion. Well
I asked the council to please consider passing this for the other things that are in it, and then we are getting the personnel policy as a draft to present to you, I'm hoping before the next meeting, to look at and have it addressed in the personnel policy.
Wouldn't this sentence, though, conflict if we had something different in the personnel policy? Wouldn't we just have to amend the salary ordinance again?
I'm not, I
Want you to strike that sentence, because quite frankly, the personnel policy will dictate what's going on, the one that's currently in effect.
Why, if we're going by Personnel policy, and that's the Bible, so to speak, then
That's already in it.
Then, yeah, we don't need this sentence.
Correct.
We can address that. This is the status quo, correct? This is what we have now.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what I
So we can address that for the personnel policy.
Policy that is current, that is in code. It was just brought to my attention that on the ordinance that we passed for the salary ordinance, it did not have that language in there, even though all of the previous salary ordinances had that language in there, so I thought to fix it, to make them all uniform, that it had to be in there that way.
No, I do understand that. Darla, though, if we changed this with the personnel policy, would we real, would we need to update the salary ordinance again?
No, the personnel policy then should control.
Okay, and so this would just be not applied, because the personnel policy is the
Well, what language is it that you want to strike specifically?
Any authorized work in excess of eight hours in a payroll day? I mean, forty hours in a payroll week, that's the law. But one of the, I'll tell you where Yeah, for some, that's correct. Where I'm going with this, a lot of people feel the government operates by two different, they operate by different standards than if, than people that are out there working at any place, McDonald's, Jiffy Treat, you name it, Kihei, and this is one of the things where we operate differently. And I, if there's a compelling reason why, I'll think about it, but I'm, and I'll consider it, but I'm, what I'm mainly, I understand the utilities and the callout, I get that completely, but majority seems to be, we've always had it this way, and I'm trying to get to why. And I don't know if anybody has explained why we've always had that.
I just took what was out of the code.
No, no, I understand, no, no.
Tell me why.
Nobody, nobody here is, it just
We don't, we haven't always had it. It originated in, I think, around nineteen ninety-nine, after I'd been here probably less than a year, and we established that we need to incentivize the callout.
Right, I don't disagree with that aspect.
Maybe we should put something in the personnel policy about callout. Again, to incentivize it, because, again, the whole Tuesday-Saturday thing, we definitely want those people making overtime, because we want them coming out. But now that we're having this whole discussion, we don't have that lined out.
Well, I'll tell you, when we were talking to, I don't know if you're talking to the same, I cannot remember her name from the companies helping us with personnel policy. She was telling us like best practice in some other towns, where if you have a water shut off or whatever, and it's only fifteen minutes, it's a minimum two hours, no matter what.
We have that as well.
Right, so I mean, similar to that either. And then, if it went beyond that, it was, you could either do time and a half, no matter what, you know, how many hours they worked, or double time or something like that.
That would be on studies, we have all this.
I get, okay, then I don't know why we need the excess of eight hours in a payroll day.
Well
Because if we have all that already.
Well, I want you to understand that if you think we should do it differently, I'd be glad to follow your lead. I just, we just need to know what you would like.
Maybe that all belongs in the personnel policy rather than a salary ordinance amendment.
Which you're gonna get in hopefully two weeks, and it'll be on the next
Less than two weeks, I'm meeting
Yeah, the next meeting, which
Do you have an issue with striking this out of this ordinance?
No.
And see, I think you've already got covered. Because if you've already got the, if you've already got it covered, I don't know why we have to even add in over eight hours in a payroll day. Because if you've already got callout pay
We've went over And over and over this, and I'm old, and we have some tried and true things that's worked for us really well, and it's never been abused, but I can, we can change this, and I don't think it'll, it'll change anything.
Will striking those words from this ordinance affect how you're doing that now?
No.
So do you have an issue with striking?
Some places have, you don't get overtime until you've worked forty hours.
That's the law. It's on for non-exempt.
The real hangover is
Unless you have a contract.
I took vacation Monday and Tuesday. We feel like that is benefit time, given, we count that towards the forty, or the eight hours. So in other words, you're on vacation today, benefit time you've earned, and then tonight, we're in a labor break, we ask you to come in. If you do it the other way, you just get straight time.
No, but you already got callout pay. Mike said that. Callout pay, that's
It's after forty, not after eight.
Well, yeah.
You would have, if you took Monday and Tuesday off, before you ever got the time and a half, you'd have to work an additional sixteen hours.
No, when you're talking about callout pay, I don't care if you've worked eight hours. If you're called out that night, you get the
That's why we do it after eight. Because all of our, I mean, I don't know if it's even, Darla can speak for this, maybe if it's legal to say it's eight hours, and you get overtime after eight.
You can say that, but that's not what the law would be, it'd be forty hours in a, in a work weekend.
That's the least you can do.
You can do more, yeah, you can do overtime after
Well, I mean, it's probably for, it's a conversation, and it's something we need to think about before we pass the personnel policy. I'm just not sure. I wanna I mean, we could beat it to death right now, but we've talked about the two, you know, concerns, or the two considerations, and I could be had on this easily.
Keep in mind, the way the policy's worded currently, the only thing to knock them out of overtime anyway is a vacation or personal business day or something like that, and that's already covered in there that those are counted as hours worked, so even if they took two PTO days, they're still gonna be in overtime, it's not gonna knock you out.
That's correct.
So it's kind of a moot point, the eight-hour part.
Try to fix something that's not broken, I think is what I was trying to say.
Yeah, but this, like this, could be abused. Though, but Well, I can give you an example, someone works fifteen minutes over every day, or comes in fifteen minutes early. Next thing you know, they got a couple hours overtime.
It's gonna be authorized.
Well, that is called Giving somebody some rope, they, they would get hung here for that.
I get that. We're talking about the current crew we have now and the current management. We're not talking about, what about ten years from now, fifteen years from now, if we don't? And then the people there are saying, we've always done it this way. Do you see where I'm going with that?
Well, I kind of do, but I, like I said, I'm not, I truly won't wrestle on the floor about this.
Or in the personnel policy rather than salary ordinance?
I would agree with that.
You're good with that?
Could you repeat that, please?
That we work on this under the personnel policy and remove this, strike it from the salary ordinance? So we don't set precedent?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I understand the only reason you put it in there is because it's been in all the others.
I do have a question, though, about, well, two questions, actually. The three hundred dollar for annual health screening, where's that money coming from?
So it was already budgeted for health insurance when we did the budgets for all the lines, for all the departments. We had done a four percent increase. We did not receive an increase in any of the lines, because we did agree to do the contract for the biometric screening. So the three hundred dollars is going to be credited to the employees' side for their premium. So what we will be doing is we'll be taking the money that we had already in the budget for the increase, and we will just be using that to supplement the employer's side to cover the premiums.
Is four percent equal to three hundred dollars?
Yes, well, it's, we have more money than three hundred dollars in the insurance premiums. Amber and I calculated it out, and we will have, in the clerk's line alone, we will have I think it was thirty-seven hundred dollars left in the health insurance line. That's the one number that I do remember is from the clerk's line.
And so at the end of the year, that money's, we'd go back to the general fund?
Correct.
So it's funded? So it's funded?
Correct.
Okay.
And the reason why we did not issue a check to the employees is because it would be considered a French benefit, and the taxes would have eaten a lot of it, and it wouldn't have been a $300 credit for them.
And the overall purpose of having an incentive is to meet some of the demands for the insurance company to keep our premiums at their current level.
And we had an excellent turnout from the employees also.
I'm good with that, I just.
That was my question, is where's the money coming from?
Yeah, we couldn't answer it till last minute. I had to ask myself.
You know, I guess my next question, the per diem, does it need to be in this ordinance as opposed to if the personnel policy is already there?
In the current personnel policy, it's set at $35. And so we weren't sure how long it would take to get the personnel policy approved through the council. And so it was suggested to put it into the salary ordinance as an amendment to get it passed faster so that when personnel are traveling and need the per diem, it would be at 50 instead of the $35 that it is currently.
Okay.
Circling back real quick, I know at the, at the end of it, after the per diem for meals, they have the overtime that I was talking about. But also, the third point, whereas any authorized work in excess of 40 hours in a payroll week shall be changed to any authorized work in excess of eight hours in a payroll day or in excess of 40 hours in a payroll week. That's showing a change. So originally, did it just say 40 hours in a payroll week?
On the salary ordinance, correct. And that was, that was what it said, but if you look back at all the previous salary ordinances.
Eight hours.
Yes, because it came from code.
Okay, so further council questions? Why, I'll guess ask them, why are we bumping police overtime from 85 and a half to 86?
Because 86 is the right number.
Correct, from FLSA.
It was, it was a mistake putting 85. I don't even know who put the 85 in there, but it was a mistake.
All right. Further council questions? All right, is there any public comment on this? Glad you guys understood all that. Back to the council for, I assume, an amendment?
I'll move to amend the amendment to the 2024 salary ordinance, 2023-18, to remove any mention of authorized work in excess of eight hours a day in the payroll day.
We're striking the third paragraph, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
So that's the motion is to just, that's the only motion on the floor right now, is to strike that third paragraph?
And approve the rest.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, well?
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swaffer.
Yes.
Motion carries. And so then there's a motion to pass the ordinance as amended? Yes.
Is there that motion?
I'll make a motion to pass the ordinance as amended.
Motion second?
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swaffer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is ordinance 2024-02 to approve a business online platform for payroll and utility billing.
Yes, I will take this. So the last time that we had the reading, there were some questions on the price and the amount. So I spoke with Gary Bradley at the People State Bank, and he is going to waive all of these setup charges and the fees. And he also offered his IT person to come and work with our IT in order to set it up. The actual machine for the utilities office to run the checks will be $500. That will be under warranty, it will be our machine to keep, so we won't have to be making the deposits. It will expedite processing the water and utility payments in the office. And for the online banking and everything included, it will be $40 a month for those services. The main thing for the payroll side of it is I will not be taking the payroll on a zip drive to the bank. That is not the most secure way to be doing it. So with the online banking, we will have it set up to where the deputy can input it. It will be authorized by myself, and we can have it checked at the bank. And then the accounts are secured through the online banking platform.
Counsel questions? Okay, I'll ask one. Under C, it says the clerk treasurer and utilities clerk are authorized to utilize a business online platform, and it continues. Why would we not put the clerk treasurer's office and utility office? Because as this reads, there's only two people who can use it.
Well, I'll take responsibility for that. I guess because they're the ones who are generally in charge of doing the payroll and doing the activity, I mean, doing the banking activities for the utilities office. But if you want to say.
I mean, if you're good with it, with just those two, that's fine.
Of both the clerk treasurer and.
Will this prevent them from giving, designating someone else?
Currently, in the clerk's office, I know that the deputy and the accounts payable clerk have online banking access in order to transfer funds from accounts. So, but they are not allowed to, and they're allowed to go to the bank to make deposits, but they are not allowed to write the checks or do, like, they would not be allowed to submit the payroll unless I authorized it. Then the utilities clerk, which would be Amber, would be able to authorize it, because I would make her, she's currently set up on the accounts as the second under me, currently, as it is.
So do you need to change the utilities clerk to the town administrator? Need to change that word.
Yeah, I guess, something a little more.
Or maybe, or they're designee.
Or they're designee, yeah. Other council questions? Questions from the public? Back to the council.
It's 2024-02 to approve a business online platform for payroll and utility billing, including the amendment.
As amended?
As amended.
Okay.
Yep.
And so just so we're clear about the amendment to paragraph C, it's going to read, the clerk treasurer and the town administrator or their designees are authorized to utilize a business online platform.
You okay with that too, Dan?
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swaffer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And vision else will update it. Thanks, sir.
New business, a new loader for water?
We, I'm putting this on hold due to some unforeseen costs to have a dumb truck that's been a pain in the heart, you know why, for a long time. So we decided to surplus that truck and look to buy a new one. So this time, the loader still works. We're just going to table this for at least two more weeks and have a firm decision.
Is there a motion from council to table as requested?
I'll make a motion to table as requested.
Sure.
Motion second?
Dan Swaffer.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes. Now we move to privilege of the floor. Anyone having business for the council not part of our normal agenda. Step up to the mic, introduce yourself, please, sign in.
The name is, the name is Jim Perry. I'm 867 North Abigail Lane, Ellisville. Congratulations, and I commend you on the action on the rural transit, which apparently Mike promised, I think at the meeting in December, that he'd find the money. And apparently, there was, there were monies available. What I, what I have a question about, though, is what follow-up? I know that we've allocated some monies for the lost service and rural transit. Probably that will last through the end of March, maybe into April. The question is whether we're dealing with any of the other questions that might be associated with this loss of service to, my recollection is 200 people who use rural transit in the, in the town of Ellisville.
We continue to look at various things. As of yet, none of them's really come to any fruition. The money is scheduled to end. The authorization to use the money is scheduled to end at the end of March.
That doesn't answer my question.
That's the only answer I can give you.
What's the status, for instance, of our discussions regarding the allocation of monies for urban transit?
We just did that. That's all the money we've allocated.
The state DOT redefined urban and rural.
Correct.
And that's, that accounts for the loss in Ellisville of the rural transit. The question is, the monies are still coming for the urban areas in the county, except one urban area, and that's, that's the town of Ellisville.
We're still talking to the various entities involved. Mike's had several conversations. We're not really sure exactly where they're going to go yet, is what I'm trying to tell you.
Progress on that, Mike?
And just to be blunt, I don't know that we're going to come to any conclusion that will be positive for Ellis.
Have we had any conversations between our corporation counselor, our town counselor, and the state DOT regarding the allocation of the funds under the grants from the Federal Transit Administration?
No.
Do we know anything about the cost to the people in Ellisville, or perhaps the town of Ellisville, of the lost services?
The lost services, you've lost me.
200 people are out of their rural transit, and some of them use for employment or for medical care and healthcare, or for pharmacy, groceries and other uses. What are the costs going to be? And conceivably, there are some people who, for instance, are presently Ellisville residents who may actually lose their employment if they can't get to their employer.
Well, first off, none of those costs are known to us. There's no way for us to get.
I didn't say that. They may be unknown to you, but the question is whether anybody has taken any, made any effort to assess those costs.
We never have run a transit system before. We never entered into agreement to run a transit system. So all these are things that we don't deal with, and therefore, we don't collect that data. No one is required to give us that data. So there's no reason for us to possess that data. We're trying to do something to stop.
And get that data, those data.
Well, thank you for your comments, sir, but that's not something we're doing. We're not collecting that data.
Participate in the rural transit system.
No, sir, we did not.
But there are people who came to Ellisville knowing that they had access to rural transit.
Which was not something.
Now it's gone, and, and the allocation of the funds are through the state DOT, under the auspices of the state DOT.
Okay, do you have any other questions, sir?
I have questions that haven't been answered.
Well, that's the only answer you're going to get, because that's the only answer we have to provide you. We have never been responsible for running a transit system. That was not within our purview, it's not within our boundaries. That was provided by another third party. So your questions are actually better addressed to them than us.
But other questions have been raised previously in this meeting to say that the past is not the future.
And we have not made a determination on what we may or may not do in the future other than fund this through the end of March.
You make a self fulfilling prophecy if you sit on your hands.
Any other comments or questions, sir?
Sounds like you plan to sit on your hands.
Do you have questions or comments, sir? Because we're done with this.
That was a comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving along now to supervisor comments.
I have no comments. I'm good, thank you.
Marty Deckard, Marty Stevens, sorry. I see you. Marty Stevens, our township trustee, signed in a feasibility study agreement for the new, to replace our existing station on Curry Pike. And they'll be starting that soon. They will be incorporating the piece of ground that's on the west side that's kind of earmarked for down the road for a future fire station. They'll be adding that into the feasibility study to see how that would change a location of the one the township's going to take care of. So as soon as I have more information on that, I'll be sure and pass it along to you guys. Also, Deputy Chief Klaus and Lieutenant, right? Zach Michaels, are going to be at a council meeting in March. I think they're going to try to be here at the first one to give an overview of where they're at with the CLIPS plan for the town. I don't know if you have anything more than that?
I'll probably come to you next meeting, just a brief overview of our planning process, not to give too much information. Some of it is not really, should be released to the public. The stuff that, that I can discuss, I will. And I'll make sure that you guys get a copy of our planning that we have. I'll just give a brief overview at the next meeting.
That's all I have.